Trying to find themselves.
Mine's on vibrate, so I don't get to find it, are we?
She said to me contacts.
Is she?
Yeah.
Because believe it or not, Marvin, I have a little license.
Well Karen, there's one thing about it, don't beat on that phone, they got your number, and pretty good, Karen. Is that for, uh, paid for?
PCA.
PCA. They got everything over there. Yes. Can't think of them. Just PCA, go ahead.
The hours, um, I mean, David.
He is on his way.
He is on his way.
Yes, he is. He's in motion now, so he's not closing.
Oh, good, good. We can, uh, I guess we can go ahead and begin the meeting, and then Karen can take care of some of those things. Why don't we go ahead and call our meetings order, please? If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll, uh, descend. This is the place to play.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Conroy?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdlin?
Here.
Mr. Luthy?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Stinklestein?
Here.
Mrs. Stackit?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Been back the whole time. The first item of business, uh, on our council meeting, we had talked about, uh, our working with the Catholic Diocese of Lexington, uh, to be the agency that issues ten million dollars on the bonds. And we had indicated, we've had first reading of that ordinance, but we, we indicated that tonight would be a public hearing, uh, to take, a required public hearing to take public comment about this fund issue. I've got a script here that I'll read, just so we make sure that we have all of the correct points that need to be covered for the hearing. This public hearing is being held as a joint undertaking of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, and the Lexington County government, pursuant to the provisions of section one seventy-four F of the Internal Code of Re- Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, for the purpose of taking public comment concerning the issuance of industrial building revenue refunding bonds. Series two thousand sixteen, Saints Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School Project by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed ten million dollars, to provide funds alone to the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington. The diocese to be used by the diocese together with other available funds to A, refinance the cost of educational facilities at the campuses of Saints Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School, the school located at four twenty-three West Short Street, Lexington, Kentucky, four oh five oh seven, and one thirty-three Bar Street, Lexington, Kentucky, four oh five oh seven, and B, to pay the cost of issuing the bonds. Notice of this hearing was published in the Georgetown News Graphic on November twenty-sixth, and in the Lexington Herald Leader on November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. The bonds will be payable solely from revenues of the diocese. The school will own and operate the facilities financed with the bonds. All interested citizens are encouraged and will be offered an opportunity at this hearing to address the hearing officer concerning deformity. Uh, this public hearing is now open for comment. Are there anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Karen, since no one has come forward, uh, there's no one to state their name and address to the record before making comments. No one has appeared before this public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed. Are you representing the diocese?
Um, yes, sir, I'm John Williams, I'm the attorney for the diocese.
Good. So I assume this was, uh, this was the public hearing then being done, we can convene the council meeting and go ahead and say.
Yes, sir.
So we close the public hearing now, we'll go ahead and commence our formal end of the council meeting. Uh, each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting. If you'd like to let those over for any possible corrections or issues.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, accepted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, in your pocket, you should also have received a copy of our latest check by Easter. With the council's permission, uh, since we have the representative of the diocese here, and since we have just completed our public hearing, it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and have second reading, I think, of the bond ordinance that Mr. Luthy's mentioned. So, uh, if you're ready with the summary. Because this ordinance, I'm pretty sure we do not want to read it.
Summary of ordinance of the city of Dorktown, Kentucky. In a meeting held on December the twelfth, twenty sixteen, the city of Dorktown, Kentucky adopted an ordinance entitled, "Enormous Authorizing the Issue of Industrial Building Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series Twenty Sixteen, Saints Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School Project of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars. Proceeds shall be loaned to a Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington to refund outstanding obligations, which in turn were issued to refinance the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping facilities suitable for use in furtherance of the educational purposes of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington. Providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds, authorizing a loan agreement appropriate for the protection and disposition of such revenues, and to further secure such bonds. Authorizing a bond purchase agreement, tax regulatory agreement, and signs, and authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds." The ordinance.
Ordinance.
Authorizing the issuance of industrial building revenue refunding bonds, Series Twenty Sixteen, Saint Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School Project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars, trying to lend to Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington to borrow through funds and retire indebtedness, which refinances the acquisition, construction, installation, equipping, and renovations of educational facilities located in the campuses of Saint Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School, located at four twenty-three West Short Street, Lexington, and one thirty-three Bar Street, Lexington, which project is and will be opened by Saint, operated by Saint Peter and Paul Regional Catholic School for the mutual benefit of the borrower and the school, and used to further and set their educational purposes. This ordinance also authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of various financing documents involved in the transaction, including the loan agreement, the bond purchase agreement, and a tax regulatory agreement, and substantially the forms submitted to the city council. Copy of the ordinance and of the form of the basic judgments for each such transition are filed in the office of the city clerk. The bonds are to be retired and loaned and made by the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington pursuant to a loan agreement and pursuant to sections of Rome three point two zero zero, which one hundred and three point two eight five of the Kentucky statute. The bonds do not constitute an indebtedness of the city of Dorktown, Kentucky, within the meaning of the Constitution of the Roman Catholic Church.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Second? Any further explanation needed or discussion needed on this matter? Walk through all these, man.
I don't say something. I'm going to abstain, just because I'm a member of the church, and that also falls under the diocese's authority. So I don't have to, but I'm just going to get it even more clear.
That'll be your job.
Huh?
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're out.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conroy?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdlin?
Abstain.
Mr. Luthy?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Stinklestein?
Yes.
Mrs. Stackit?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, ordinance matters.
Thank you, sir, that completes my business, so.
We'd be glad for you to stick around for a sitting, sir. If we move back to the regular order of our agenda, um, there were no, there was no one signed up for public comments on the sheet. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the audience? Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, I think it is.
Mayor, I've got one public comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's a, uh, application in our package for PCA to do their part for Ron on, uh, April the twenty-second, and they're likely approval, just the same route, same, as we always say.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. There are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mayor's comments. That's what follows public time. Several things that, that I want, I want to make sure that, that we keep as an ongoing conversation, particularly when citizens have brought things to our attention, uh, at recent meetings. I want to make sure we address what progress we're making. And a couple of these comments, especially, uh, there were a couple of council members that could not be present at the last meeting, and we made a few of these comments, and I, at the risk of being redundant, I just want to make sure we're all operating on the same page, and we have a chance to address a couple of items. Uh, at our last council meeting, uh, we had the gentleman from Old Abbey approaching council, uh, to repeat his concerns about Old Oxford Road. And then, uh, after the last planning and zoning commission meeting, uh, the same gentleman sent out an email to the council, uh, expressing frustration that nothing had been done. What I wanted to do is talk about all the things that we are doing, uh, to, to be as responsive as we can. At our last meeting, we committed to take several steps. Uh, one was to, uh, work on some of the, the worst potholes, particularly those that are on the edge of the road. We missed an opportunity Friday, we had, uh, the blacktop batch cooking all day Thursday, so it couldn't be ready on Friday, and apparently overnight on Thursday, there was an equipment malfunction, and we lost Friday. Uh, we have talked with the blacktop plants today, they are going to be open tomorrow. So Public Works is intending to work on some of the potholes tomorrow. They scheduled themselves again for Thursday to address some of the potholes. Uh, we also indicated that we would look at what it took to paint a center line, or to provide a center line on Old Oxford Road. Uh, it was presented to council that, you know, this is nothing but, thank you, y'all, and thank, thank Russia, and thank the strip down the road. Unfortunately, it's a little more involved than that. Uh, if we're, if we are going to put striping on the road, it has to be done in a proper, professional manner, so we don't lead motors into risk. It, it's not just a matter of painting an uninterrupted white line down the road, there, there are turns that have to be incorporated into the striping. It's more than simply going out and painting a center line. Uh, we've had, since the last council meeting, Kyle has been working on what a striping plan will look like to work for the length of Old Oxford. And then we intend to bid the application of that striping. Uh, we don't paint stripes anymore, we use the heavier tape, uh, markers for those applications, uh, and it's very weather sensitive. Uh, so we are doing the engineering, and we have identified, we know the cost is somewhere between ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So this will be a bid situation, and we have to bring it back to the council. But we are working, uh, as we said we would. Kyle has also issued an RFP, or an engineering contract, to give us a, uh, a broad idea of what the cost is to rebuild the road. So if it wasn't, we still have that dollar figure in mind. We know it's a lot of money, we can't have this conversation unless we begin to quantify that. So we've got that RFD going out as well. So I feel as though, uh, each of the things that we were addressed to, asked to address immediately, uh, we're taking tangible steps to get that done, including a bigger engineering look, which could hopefully lead us to an ultimate solution. So, uh, I, I regretted the email that we received from the gentleman, I'm sure that was probably spurred by the planning and zoning action on, on the Abbey the night before.
Will that come to us, Mayor, right away?
Yes. Sure. And, uh, we're, we're also taking more of a thirty thousand foot look at that area to look at some road improvements, or some road additions, that might make a lot of sense. Joe's here, and we can speak to this later, but I think you'll see in the comprehensive plan, a recommendation for the new road, thirty-five fifty-two, that we're going to call Lexus Way. You know, currently, when it opens next week, it will go from Champion to Interstate, to Exchange, and it'll come around to Cherry Blossom. And a logical extension of that now existing road over to Old Oxford Pike would take a tremendous traffic burden off of people that now have to come back in Old Oxford and deal with that traffic congestion to get back out to a similar area. If we could put this, Joe, in the comprehensive plan, and if community leaders and legislative bodies embraced the idea, then we're hopeful that we can begin working on getting that into a six-year vote plan. And we're still going to have to make improvements to Old Oxford Road. But if you, if you look at a map, and just kind of mentally trace, uh, Lexus Way on over to, uh, Old Oxford Pike, it, it could be one of the more significant redeemer roads that we, we've envisioned. So, uh, Old Oxford Road is, has been discussed more over the last two weeks than I can remember in my first two years of sitting here. We haven't fixed it yet, but we sure are talking about it a lot.
Good. I have one question for you, you mentioned the tape, is that an application that our Public Works would actually put in, if we do a private contract?
It's something, uh, you know, for example, the, uh, the striping out department was professionally done by, by a group connected to the ample table. So, uh, you know, that, that's why we anticipate the cost, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, and we did some.
They have to put turning, there are so many feet away, before you're going to be turning it and everything on that, so that's been stayed open, so.
Yeah, we just, we just can't put a strip in that will lead a motorist to make a bad decision.
You know, one of the questions, I guess I have, I mean, as I said, I don't know how wide that road is, maybe it's the same width throughout, but there may be places where you can have center lines for it, because they haven't had, how narrow a road could get. I know in the county, you do run into that situation, so.
You sure do.
And that is part of the county, so.
I think there's places in that road where if you stay entirely to the right side of the white line, you may have to win.
Right.
You can offside the road.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, but we're, we're, we're trying to practice the art of the possible. What we can get done to help as much as we can, and until we can get to a better fix. The other issue that, that I wanted to, uh, spend a few minutes talking about, and we addressed this in some detail at the last council meeting, but as I said, I wanted to make sure that we, we clearly understood this. We've received several questions over the last, uh, couple of weeks, about property tax collections, and how aggressively we were pursuing property tax collections, uh, and, uh, this seems to have captured the interest of some folks, and, and you all received an email about this issue today. Uh, that email was sent to all eight council members, the city clerk, and Arlene Wilson. It unfortunately did not come to me or Andrew, naturally, it was forwarded to us. At the last council meeting, we indicated that, we think we have made very positive strides in our property tax collections, and we think that our clerk, Tracy Hoffman, has done an outstanding job of property tax collections. We have, she has come to us and has asked for information and guidance on what the clerk has the statutory authority to do, or does not have the statutory authority to do. Andrew's going to do a lot of legal research to see exactly what that looks like from the KRS point of view. But, but we also know that some of these matters are just policy decisions. And there don't be decisions that we want to come to the city council for your all's guidance on. So what I asked the council at the last meeting to do, if, if you all would be thinking about these same issues, uh, property tax collections, uh, penalties, interest, uh, how much authority you want the administration and the clerk to have to settle those matters? And this becomes a very practical exercise for us. Uh, if Tracy gets a check in for a property tax bill, and if, if it's a hundred and five, a hundred dollar check, and the property tax bill is a hundred and five dollars, she's not going to send the check back. We're going to deposit that check, it just makes good financial sense to deposit what we've got. We need to, we need specific guidance on how to treat some of those outstanding balances, how interest runs, how penalties run. Uh, if someone comes in and they have five years of tax, and they want to pay those five years, and they want to pay the interest on those, but they want to negotiate about a penalty. We just need guidance, from a policy perspective, on your expectations on how we should handle this. Uh, we're seeing this as a great opportunity for us to get clarity on this issue. We've been working on this same issue for more than a year with the revenue commission. So the same principles are at play with what we're trying to fix with the revenue commission. One of the key tools that we have in both the revenue commission collections, and, and the way we police that, and the way we will work on property tax collections, is our administrative hold ordinance, or the lackless ordinance, where people can't get certain licenses from any city or county department if they're not completely paid up and square with other city and county departments. So, we're working, uh, pretty hard on an administrative structure that will support us doing this well. Uh, but we're at a place where we're going to need some of your input.
Mayor, you just mentioned that if, if somebody's, uh, delinquent or behind, or if they're, that they can't perhaps obtain a building permit or a occupancy permit, is that, I do remember passing that legislation, I don't know how long ago it's been, but that would still be in place today, right?
Certainly is, and we've used it recently.
Okay.
We had some, some topics, some building permits, and they had a bunch catching up today.
Okay.
So the ordinance is working. Uh, there, but there still are some policy questions that we want your all's guidance on. And we like to address this in a very open and transparent way, so we're all clear on the outcomes. We can explain it to our citizens, and we can move on. Yes, man?
If I could ask this question, you know, the, uh, the revenue commission, and I know that, uh, he's doing an outstanding job as far as collections and stuff, but how much discretion do you give him when people owe back taxes? Do you give that solely to him to make that decision or negotiate that penalty, or? I'm not saying the taxes, but maybe the late fees and the penalty, do you give him that discretion?
We, we are. Scott has been working ever since he got here to verify all the numbers in our system. And he's getting closer to doing that, where he can state with some certainty what all the numbers are. And frankly, we're still working out some of those processes with Scott. So this is a very, uh, the two conversations relate to each other, and they're going to have some similar solutions. So, it's an active issue for the revenue commission, it's an active issue for the city council. Uh, and I just want the council to know, uh, that, you know, it was stated that we haven't talked about this at the council level, and we haven't taken any steps, and, uh, that simply is not the case. Uh, we would think in, in, uh, early next year, it'd be unrealistic to think of the first meeting in January, signing by the second meeting in January, or in early February. Council at the last meeting, as present, asked us to come up with a set of recommendations to explain the circumstances that Tracy's faced with, on a pretty routine basis, and what our recommendations will be about how to handle that. We also want to spend some time and be able to give you numbers in context about what our collections are, what our. our collections are, what our outstandings are. Revenue Commission's been spending a lot of time on that issue. We want, and we want you all to understand our numbers cold, and then when a citizen has a question on the matter of this, like, we're all on the same page with it. So if you all continue to do your thinking, and this will be an active conversation in the first two thousand seventeen.
Mayor, I still like the idea of someone bringing us kind of some of the parameters and like this, mull that over, and I'm sure that's something we're probably working on.
We're working on that, and we also get, we'd like to, to see if we can get a list of best practices, what some other places do, what works for them. It is clumsy if we have to hold all this stuff and bring it to you all for every citizen's right. But at the same time, we want to respect the fact that it's your all's ultimate authority on these matters. So we'll ask your help with the policy, and then we'll do our best to make it happen. Just an update on the car dome transaction. We are continuing to meet with the DICEs, local church officials, and especially transportation cabinet officials. We're still struggling to get that grant down. It's a hundred thousand dollar grant. It is subject to prevailing wage. You know, finally, on the state projects, we don't, we don't have to worry with prevailing wage until two hundred and fifty thousand, their subsidy's taxed, because these are federal dollars. When it goes over two thousand dollars, you have to deal with prevailing wage. So that may change in Kentucky over the next two months. A lot of talk around about, but today, that holds in place now. We have now asked for even more latitudes from the transportation cabinet on how we conduct this bidding exercise. And we're, we have meetings scheduled with the DICEs to continue to look at details of the lease construction. So we're not gonna get it done by the end of the year, but we are live and in, so maybe in the right way. Our MSW consultant report, they're continuing to work on that. We still have that scheduled to be presented to the council on January twenty-third. Before that happens, we're supposed to get a hard copy draft that we can review and make sure that it presents the data in a way that is understandable and matches our circumstances. But that presentation will be on January the twenty-third. Then our hard work begins. Then our work begins with going through those recommendations and figuring out just exactly how we want to structure public works on the public. We also want to thank Polly for being able to attend. We had the students from the University of Cincinnati present their findings about our downtown evaluation, and just some great ideas from these students. There was enough student brains looking at this that they broke themselves into five teams, and they looked at our entire downtown, divided by Main and Broadway. So we had, we had a team report on each of those four quadrants, and then a fifth team worked on design guidelines that planning committee and the city council can consider for historical relays and the ways we want downtown to look in the future. That report, the draft was two hundred and twenty-nine pages long, and the final report will be just over three hundred pages long. These students even went so far as for, for all of their ideas, they gave us case study examples of where it has been done in other communities. Now, it's expensive and it's difficult, but they show us that it's possible and that these things have been done in other places. Some of the ideas were very extensive, far-reaching ideas that will require private investment, maybe some public-private partnerships, but there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there as well, that we can get knowledge out of. Given that the report is that long, we're hopeful that in the next week or so, we can provide you with an electronic copy of it. They're gonna have hard, a handful of hard copies delivered to us on December twenty-ninth. That's a lot of trees to kill. So we're gonna circulate it to you all electronically. We've also asked that the twenty Scott County high school students that helped us with the project, we're gonna send them electronic copies, and we've asked them to give us written responses to what they see and like, and how they react to it. So very good exercise, and one that I think we'll, we'll be able to work from for a while. So more to come on that issue. End of mayor's comments. Now, council had asked that we do a swearing-in ceremony tonight, and we actually intended to do that immediately after the bond hearing. So if, if council would like, we could take just a moment before we finish the full agenda, and you, my sake, folks can get sworn in. Bruce, can you be patient with us for just five minutes?
You got it.
All right, thank you. Should we run it up front here?
You lead.
Y'all are beauteous. Have you ever seen a more beautiful council? Yeah, you have, Bert?
He's one of Chris's president.
That's right. Rather than the clumsy exercise of asking you all to repeat every word of this, I'm gonna read through it, and if you all could simply, simply answer in the affirmative at the end, and that will be very easy. If you could raise your right hand, please. "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of city council member for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any persons thus offending, and will faithfully execute the laws, so help me God." Thank you. Congratulations. Another term. Good for you all. All right. We're now good for twenty-four months.
I said we could go to Galvin, and he said on Tom.
Of course, this is after the meeting.
After the meeting.
We have business first.
Okay, moving on with our agenda now, we have an executive order appointing members to the Code Enforcement Board. You'll recall when we worked out with the interlocal committee the way we would do this, there are five appointments to the Code, Code Enforcement Appeals Board, Code Enforcement Board. That board will have five members and two alternates. Sadie Bill will appoint a member to the five-person board, Stankley Ground will appoint a member to that five-person board, and Accounting will appoint a member to that five-person board. Tonight, we would like to appoint one member, we appoint Paul on our, and we would like to appoint our half of the joint appointment that we share with the fiscal court. So each of the four legislative bodies have their own appointment, and then we share one with the fiscal court. We also share the appointment of the two alternates with the fiscal court. So the executive order that you have before you is appointing Vincent Morris, who is a current member of the existing Code Enforcement Board that we're, that we're.
The old appeals board.
For a term that will expire December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and Billy Perkins is a joint appointment between the city and the county with a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And the two alternates that are jointly appointed are Bill Stark and Ben Wallace, expiring in seventeen and eighteen respectively. So those are the four appointments covered by this executive order. There's motion for a.
Second.
Any questions about those appointments? And as soon as we, let's see, the county also, their appointee was Chuck Olber. Oliver, former, yeah, short-term county candidate, Don Oliver, his son, was the county appointee, and we're still waiting to hear what Sadie Bill and Stankley Ground are. We have a motion for a second to be heard. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item eight A, first reading of an ordinance changing zoning for property owned by Woodacre Land Company.
You want me?
No, it's okay. Thank you, mayor, council members. I'm, I'm here representing the Planning Commission. I was just gonna basically go through the recommendation of the Planning Commission on this zone change, and Al Gross and Bruce Langford are here to represent the applicants, and they can answer any questions that you have for the applicants. But basically, this zone change came before the Planning Commission on November eleventh, the regular Planning Commission meeting. It was a request to change the zoning on a parcel or a piece of property on the west side of I seventy-five, north and south of the new interchange road that's gonna run from the interchange to Champion Way. The request is, is to change the zoning on a hundred and eighty-six point seven four acres was the original request that Planning Commission heard, and in your packet, I believe, is the concept plan from that original application. Planning Commission discussed the application overall, and based on kind of a staff, our staff recommendation, they recommended approval, but on a smaller, they recommended scaling it down, so they recommended not addressing the zone change on the back portion, which was an area planned for kind of light industrial, commercial park area, so light manufacturing and kind of wholesaling and larger commercial development. They did recommend approval for the remainder, and then after the Planning Commission meeting, before city council, the applicants amended the concept plan to show the smaller area. So if you have, you have probably in your packet, the original area that the zone change was requested on, then you have an amended concept plan that shows the area that's for you tonight. So the area was reduced to eighty, a request for eighty-nine point two-one acres, B five general commercial, and ten point five-two acres professional office. The B five district is our most general commercial category. It usually covers larger commercial developments that try to develop the whole project as a whole with uniform kind of building standards, development standards, street, street skates and landscaping standards. So it's the district that's applied to these large, large-scale developments like the Walmart Center, the old, the landmark shops, the Kroger development, the old Walmart site. So these large-scale commercial developments are required to beat zone B five. So that's what they're asking on this site, and then they're asking for a strip of general office on the south side of the new interchange road between Champion and the, and the new interchange as a buffer area. This whole area was planned residential, urban residential in our two thousand and six Conference of Plans, so when we looked, when the Planning Commission staff looked at the recommendation to make to the Planning Commission on this, we looked at the existing Conference of Plan, which, the one that's in place right now is from two thousand and six, the future lane use map anyway, and it planned this area as urban residential. When we look at a zone change, we have to look at three things. What does the Conference of Plan, future lane use map say? What does the general text of the Conference of Plan say? And then if, if that doesn't match what's being requested, then we look at two other things. One, has there been any changes in the area of physical, economic, or social nature that have changed the general area that would justify a zone change? Or is the existing zone that's in place not appropriate for the property? We basically made the recommendation that since the new interchange road is going in, there's been a significant change in the area based on that roadway and the new, and the access it creates from, not in the interstate, but from both the joining sides of town. It's become a kind of prime commercial site because it's, it's typically the most attractive retail commercial sites for those on the, on the evening, on the right-hand side of the road in the evening rush, so as, as you're headed home from work, generally, the right-hand side of the road is the, the prime commercial retail site. So it is, there have been significant changes, it is a prime kind of retail commercial site. Our main concern in reviewing this, from the staff perspective, is the scale of it. Originally, it was a hundred and seventy-six acres proposed B five commercial, which would have allowed for one point four million gross square feet of commercial space, which is nearly fifty percent the amount of commercial building in Georgetown presently. So we were a little concerned about the scale of the development, so we recommended to not, not rezone the whole site at this point, but to leave off the back portion. There's also some environmentally sensitive areas on site. There's floodplain along Dry Run Creek, and we're doing a floodplain map update right now through FEMA, so those, the floodplain's not set in stone. It may change a little bit, and there hasn't been a full flood study of the property. Most of the floodplain is in the back, in the area that we're asking to wait, hold off on the zone change, so that's another reason that we kind of asked to, or recommended that they hold off on the whole site. Also, the traffic impacts to the new road. We kind of wanna see the area developed in stages so that we can see the impact as the development goes forward to that new road. So for those reasons, we recommended to Planning Commission, and they, they agreed and recommended also in their vote to recommend approval, but on a stepped-back concept. I think that's, that should summarize it pretty well. If you have any. If you have any questions for me, I'll be here. Bruce and Al can answer questions as well.
I have a question now. The subdivision in fact, or this one, oh, God, is... The first master plan was put before you all. Was any of this area that they're asking to rezone, put that first plan in?
Yeah, with the original zone change, there was a concept plan that showed, if you see, if you look on your sheet, there was a dashed line that kind of crosses about the midpoint through the B-five general commercial, the area shown as general commercial. To the left of that is A-one, to the right of that is currently zoned R-two. All that R-two area is shown as residential.
And that was part of the master plan for this subdivision, or this one is right now?
It was shown as part of a concept plan for the overall. It didn't get more, it never went through the preliminary plat approval process. So it was shown more as future residential with the general layout of, you know, how the roads would lay out. So yes, to answer your question, yes, it was shown as residential as part of this.
What I'm getting at is our ordinance for the common scheme of development, where we say that if homeowners go in there and they invest in an area like that, that we're not gonna change the zoning, they can't change the plan because these people are already invested in what they saw when they first bought into this. So I'm wondering if this is in violation of our ordinance?
I don't think it is because that area was just shown as future residential on a concept plan presented at the zone change stage. So I've had, you know, without the wording in front of me.
We can make sure we look at that situation fully and have an answer in time for the next council meeting. But I'm inclined to agree that the ordinance speaks in terms of developments that have received preliminary development approval. That's the trigger, preliminary development approval, and then approval of at least one final plat within that. If it's not included in that preliminary development plan, then it could not be covered under our common scheme of development.
That's what I'm asking you, if it was.
They never, there was never a preliminary plat approved for that area. So generally, let's rezone this 280 acres. We'll submit a plat for this section that's gonna develop now, and the remainder was just shown as kind of a concept. This area will be residential. So I, I mean, I would have to sit down with Andrew.
To the trigger state, I'm just... So we'll be glad to address that question specifically. I don't think we've had a preliminary development plan approved that would make our trigger, but we'll give you an upper-down answer.
Joe, I have a question for you. I'm on page 20, which is kind of an overview of what the development's going on from the interstate over to Champion Way, once it's completed. And I know one of the items, or one of the items we've talked about over the past two years is light poorly lit roads. And I mean, I can obviously see that looks like there's gonna be at least three stoplights there, right? I'm assuming those are stoplights.
Yeah, yeah. One at Champion Way and two, there are two intersections along that. They would both, you know, if this developed out, they would both need to be signified.
So I've got two questions. From the interstate over to Champion Way, is there going to be street lighting that lights up Lexus Way?
Yes. Actually, Mark, one of the earlier things we did is this council, the state asked us to take responsibility for the lighting of Lexus Way.
Okay.
And we've already voted to do that. The state will provide the street lighting at the intersection proper, and we have responsibility for the lighting of each way on Lexus Way.
So when you say intersection proper, I guess that's where I was hoping, I want the bridge.
The bridge. The bridge.
Okay.
The bridge and the, all the off-ramps will be state responsibility. The length of Lexus Way and the other direction is the city's responsibility.
On Champion Way there, where that intersection's going to be changed in Lexus, because that's a pretty dark area.
I'd have to look at the plans and see what is planned for that intersection.
Yeah. I mean, I know we've had plenty of discussion on this over the past two years, and we might not be able to go back and do, be able to handle some of the intersections that are already there, that are already built.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us moving forward, please, and this is a good place to start. If we can't go back and take care of intersections that are already there, Champion is a, it's a dark road, and that there's probably going to be a large amount of traffic on that road in the years.
I think when we, when traffic pad or pattern settle in, I think this area's gonna be very busy.
I'd like to see us make a commitment, you know, given this is only the first reading. But, you know, whether it's tonight or when we take a vote on that side, I think it's important. You know, it's a safety issue. I think the development itself looks nice from what I can see. That's the only concern I have, is making sure that we prevent a potential safety issue, whether it's pedestrians, cars, or out walking. I think this is a great place to start.
They will have to come back for development plan approval. If this zone change is approved, they'll have to come back through planning commission for, get development plan approved, so we can also address that at that point.
Joe, or Al, the eight-acre stormwater detention feature, am I reading this correctly? That's intended to hold water all the time?
Yes.
And be a, and actually be a water feature in addition to a retention basin?
Correct.
Is that, is that gonna be a good, I mean, are we gonna have a decent look at an eight-acre surface acre, or are we gonna get shriveled up around the edges? And I'm just curious about how that feature will function.
It's proposed, certainly proposed to be an amenity. And it's eight surface acres and has the dual function of stormwater management and also, also is an amenity and enhancement to the, to the commercial park. I think it'll be a tremendously nice feature with some open space that leads to and from it.
Folks love water.
They do?
It is, it is a nice amenity, as long as it meets that dual, that dual use.
And it fits the natural topography of the land, too. That's why it was chosen to be at that location. Should be something that is easily built and certainly one that is enjoyed, I think, tremendously.
And that would not be dedicated over to the city? That'd be privately maintained, I guess?
I think that'd be privately maintained, absolutely.
Joe, the, I'm more comfortable with the scale of that plan. And just, the B-five seems appropriate, and the professional office building seems appropriate. At some later date, if the applicant comes back, the light industrial behind that would have concern to me. Mainly, that's not in this application. They're just, just stay for future reference, that light industrial would be turned in there.
We are, I didn't get into the concept plan because I thought maybe Al could address it, but the, there is a trail system that's integrated into this so that the neighborhoods to the south, there's a multi-use trail that is on the south side of the new road and crosses the interstate. So there's a, with this dual kind of boulevard-type entrance, there is a plan, and this is just a concept plan, so this ought to be fleshed out, not only the lake, but the trail system. There's a plan for a trail, a multi-use trail system around the kind of open space around the development to allow the residential area to access the commercial areas without, you know, by walking or bicycle.
Joe, have the developers indicated the account timeline?
No, I mean, they, for the traffic study, they, the build-out year was 2026, but I don't think they have any tenants or any anchors on board. So I think it would, really, the market would drive the project start date. So it could be 2026 at the earliest for build-out, so I'm not sure. Al might have a better...
No, I don't. I mean, it's, first step is the land use, and I think this road is gonna be a tremendously active thoroughfare. This is great infrastructure, well-located, and I think the market will find it, but only time will tell.
I mean, it's kind of like, the Whittaker Land Company owns this land, and they also own the Tiff property. So they're, you know, the Tiff property's been sitting there for a long time. So this, I think, is better situated for retail development, but I mean, it could, they're competing somewhat.
Joe, I got one more question. Talking about this stormwater retention, like, and if we can privately maintain, we have a situation in the city where companies divested themselves of these type of properties so they don't have the liability to maintain it, and then they dissolved the LLC that they invested it to, nobody owns it now. So is there a way for us to make sure that this space tied to some value of the property that we can assess if they don't maintain it? You understand what I'm saying, Andy?
Are you talking?
We've talked about that before. We have the space around town in Colony, where they just moved it over, started LLC, moved the property over to the LLC, and then just dissolved the LLC so they wouldn't have the liability of maintaining that space.
Are those retail? Are you talking about, I mean, not retail, but residential?
That's a residential one. The other one that I see coming is, you know, Connect the Road, right next to Kentucky Bank. There's a stormwater retention basin there, and we couldn't get anybody to take care of it, they weren't maintaining it. I think somebody could do one.
It's tied to someone. I think Mayor's office has some new deals on that.
With that same company that divested themselves in Colony, who owns that, so I'm looking for that happening somewhere on the road because it's not tied to any valuable response.
Most likely, I don't know. I'm guessing this would be tied to an REA because it's a commercial development.
Yeah, I mean, this, since it's a commercial development, it's gonna serve as stormwater kind of control for the entire, for the overall development. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate having to catch somebody trying to do that. I wouldn't, I mean, it would, it would have to be tied to the overall stormwater system, and it's a commercial development, so it'll be, you know, all kind of controlled by the commercial developer, the, you know, the residential investment trust. So I don't anticipate that.
Our stormwater ordinance that we passed in 2015, not the common scheme of development ordinance, but the stormwater ordinance has safeguards in it that essentially require on residential and commercial development that there be, in commercial, that there be some kind of an agreement to which the city is the party that says, you will maintain this in perpetuity, and if you don't, there are other problems. We, I think we have anticipated that issue on future developments, you know.
Kroger did that, for example, on their, their new store, said that a real estate, is that right, REA, real estate easement agreement?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty typical that the stormwater detention area, if it's a large area, it'd be platted as a separate, separate from the lots. So that could happen, but as far as the long-term maintenance, I wouldn't, you know, it's something that we definitely need to look out for when we approve plats, make sure that language is there, that, you know, it's maintained by the overall file lots within the development, regardless of whether it's separate or not. So it's something we look at, make sure is in place, that plat approval, but I'm not saying that we, that, you know, we gotta make sure we're diligent in it, and if the stormwater ordinance requires it, then I think that's further protection, I think.
I think we just need to be sure that they can, I'm just talking about these people here, I'm kidding, but if you can't separate it off as a separate parcel, and then the rest is, we're done already. We just may have to put safeguards in to keep that.
Okay, well, of course, by practice, we don't vote on first reading, but we'll have our, council actually gets to vote at our first meeting in January. Bruce, we canceled our December 26 meeting, so we're gonna take this up again until January. If the council doesn't have any questions now, we may have the first one.
An ordinance permitting the Georgetown Sky County zoning ordinance summary, permits the Georgetown Sky County zoning ordinance to show change in zoning classification for certain real property consisting of a total of 99.73 acres located in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Interstate 75 and Kentucky 352. In Georgetown and Kentucky, there are 38.90 acres from agriculture A-one to commercial B-five, for 50.31 acres from residential R-two to commercial B-five, and for 10.52 acres from residential R-two to commercial professional office P-one. Provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination from Georgetown City Clerk's Office 100, North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced to public record for the first time December 12, 2016.
Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Oplin, Mr. Arthur, we accept that recommendation, totally in agreement with it. I want to work with the planning commission. We hear your questions and your concerns. We will take those to the Whittaker Land Company. We will address them at the planning commission as you direct, and do everything we can to work toward a prime development in this area, the way you direct it, the way the planning commission directs it. We're at your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We've covered item B, and if we drop down to the eighth, C, we have second reading of the board term ordinance. Just quickly, for the council members that weren't able to be present at the last meeting, we found a very, actually, our friends in the county attorney's office did some homework and found a very neat solution to our board term, I'm not saying, situation of the, we actually found a very old attorney general's opinion, attorney general opinion that indicated there were certain boards that we could not make subject to term limits.
Airport Board was one of them.
So we simply changed that ordinance by adding the few words, except there...
Except for here, but pretty much they won.
And then that gives us the...
An ordinance permitting section two dash 196 of the Code of Ordinances regarding boards and commissions, summary. One, amend section two dash 196 of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth regulations for members of boards and commissions to provide, the existing two-term limit shall not apply when such term limits are contrary to state law. Two, requires for appeal and consistent proof of several guilty provisions and an effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office 100, North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced to public record for the first time, no number 28, 2016. Call it correct the second time, December 12, 2016.
Sponsored by Ms. Connie Tucker. Thank you. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. If there are any questions, we'll be on the roll.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdle?
Yes.
Mr. Letzke?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Walter?
Yes.
Mrs. Telesak?
Yes.
Mrs. Stocke?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. My over-under, John? We do that every meeting. We figure seventy-five minutes, I've got nine minutes. Item nine on your agenda is a municipal order approving eighth street light.
Eighth street light.
I know.
Show, who wants to make a motion for approving?
I'll second it.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Yes, I'll second. Thank you.
You want to mention the street?
Yes.
Stick it anywhere.
Oh, goodness. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next municipal order will require a little more explanation. And we have Chief Ward, Assistant Chief Olson here to help me with this. We had explained to the council previously that we had a catastrophic incident with a truck. We don't remember it, unusable. And we have, we have found a truck. Used truck. Now, this is the new truck.
This is the new. Too many trucks.
Our new, our new, our engine, in, in this year's budget, we allocated two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars with the idea that we were going to allocate the same amount in our new budget starting July one. And then we'd be in a position to actually take delivery of the truck. Because they bought long, good times, still being, we wanted to acquire the truck in a position of being able to spec the truck, take bids, and order it now with the idea that we, once the new budget was approved, then we'd be in a position to take delivery of the truck. The way to keep everything in its proper sequence financially, we have to demonstrate an ability to pay for the entire truck before we order it. So what we've set forth in, in this executive order is that we commit the two-hundred-and-forty that we've already voted. And we make a commitment to pay for the remaining balance of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars out of prior year revenue. So that we can legally cover all of the costs today. It is not our intention to use prior year revenue. When the new budget year occurs and we ratify our new budget, we'll reverse that transaction. We won't, we, we don't anticipate taking it out of our cash reserve. But we're indicating that we will as a last resort, so we can go ahead and order it now. The other part of this municipal order is if we go ahead and pay the two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars now upon the execution of the contract, we can save eleven thousand dollars on the outstanding balance. And given the amount of interest that we earn in today's interest environment, we ain't going to make eleven thousand dollars on that money. So we may as well use the money we have to achieve that, that reduction. So that's a sloppy way of explaining that municipal order.
That's a good one.
Are, are we describing the right truck in the right way?
Absolutely. That's, that's perfect.
Uh, this truck will be a Pierce.
Pierce enforcer.
Pierce enforcer.
That's sold by Finland Fire Equipment, that's the dealer.
We, we've sat with the chief and Eric. They've gone through the specs and gone through a detailed list of where they match exactly and where there are slight deficiencies. This is their final recommendation and I think they've done a good job of getting this to them.
Do you need a motion or you get a read?
Move, go ahead.
I'm, I'm going to motion move.
There's a second. This plays out pretty much.
Sure did, sure did.
What will we do with the old truck? The one that this is going to replace?
It will go into the reserve status.
It will go in reserve.
Yeah.
Will anything fall out or did the one that we, the one that was broken, did that, is that the one?
The one, the used, the used quint that, that you all voted on last council meeting, that actually will get rid of our used engine, the old tower truck, the ladder truck that we have, and those two beverage rescue trucks. So all those will actually be gone with the purchase of that used truck, used quint. Because we did that on trade-in. But, and that's, when we can get this one to secure this one, our apparatus will be like, I mean, it'll be, it'd be really good. We would actually, the, we'll be moving an eleven-year-old truck that, that we currently have as front line. It'll go into the reserve. That quint that we'll get will be our reserve ladder. So we'll have two good pieces of reserve apparatus. And then, you know, pretty much what's our, our front line won't be older than.
Yeah, unless some five years old.
Five years old, our front line apparatus will be. I mean, once we can get this truck and get that quint in here, our apparatus will be in exceptional shape. Better than I, than, you know, I've been here twenty-two years and can't ever remember that.
For some time to come, probably.
Absolutely, yes. And what we're, what we're looking at is we're trying to get trucks into the reserve status a lot. You know, years past, you know, we were putting eighteen, nineteen-year-old trucks in a reserve status where they're pretty much, were out by then. Our hope is that we can get trucks into reserve status at eleven, twelve years old. And that way, they still have good life on to serve that purpose of a reserve. But, you know, those years ago, too, we were having, you know, money wasn't great. I mean, we were having some hard times. We had to do what we had to do to get that. But, you know, we're in a good shape now.
Do reserves get utilized very often? I mean, or what, how often do they get utilized?
The reserves?
Yeah.
It just depends, you know. Periodically, we had to take trucks out to get them serviced. So, you know, that, that's when the reserve will come into play. You know, and then you run into scenarios where trucks break down. You know, they could be out, you know, a week to a month at a time, depending on how, you know, quick the repairs are. So it just depends. We're like keeping our fingers crossed right now because really, we don't have anything in our reserve status currently. You know, we're, basically, what we're doing now is we're borrowing the truck from the county. If, if something happens. So we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed that our front line stays up going. But we're doing good. I mean, you know, like I said, if we, once we get that quint in and able to get this truck, be able to get it in, you know, we're probably looking at September, probably, before the delivery of it, we'll, we'll be doing really good with our apparatus.
Did, did anybody ever think in these chambers, we were here at Georgetown Fire Chiefs?
Good shape.
All right, the rattlers are in good shape? Think about it. You all been there a long time.
You might not have heard it, but I guarantee Chief Brunn would wish he could have said it.
Chief of the night family came.
And I was here. And you're still here watching it.
He raised it up, the way to go, right?
That's right. You taught, taught him well.
But you all deserve credit as well. I mean, you all, you know, are listening to our requests and, you know, helping us out. I mean, you know, we, we're not blind to the fact, you know, all those years past, we were, you know, the city as a whole didn't have the money. You know, we just wasn't able to do what we can do now. And we're, we're just, you know, year by year, building to where we can get in the shape where we're at now. So, you know, it takes some time, but, you know, that's what we do. We adapt and overcome, so we're doing good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all, thank you.
Chief might as well state the vote here. The next item on your agenda is a purchase of a minis rated vehicle. Too much documentation on the fire truck.
Nice job, Rick.
Your documentation. Thank you. We have a municipal order to approve a two thousand seventeen Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive. It was budgeted and it is a state build price contract, thirty-five thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. Questions been made?
Second.
Second? There are no questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Nice job, chief.
Thank you. Great holiday, chief. You all serious, thank you.
I'm one minute late.
Close the door, Sally, we're coming home.
That's right, that's right. Council comments?
Mayor, I know I keep bringing this up, but I think it just keeps happening. Ironically, it's right there at Champion Way where they're, where they're doing the work on raising canes. You know, I know it's.
I haven't got, we, therefore, right after we had the accident, till about, till we got the rental truck, we weren't running the sweep every day. We didn't have a man park.
Yeah.
So he hasn't been, the last couple of weeks, he hasn't been around since we got the rental truck. So I'll have him go out there tomorrow.
Okay. Just, just some of those intersections just, just accumulates.
Well, we get a few at East Main, too. Where they come out with the rock quarry.
Chief, what was that debris on the road? What is all the sand, debris, all the way down Broadway?
Well, somebody on a big dump truck has, doesn't realize that their bed wasn't closed all the way. It just went all the way past.
No, I think, I think the state brought in some sand. Somebody spilled some. They had a spill from just past.
It's all the way past the high school.
Yes.
So was that intentional?
Yeah, the state.
Who cleans it up?
It looks like.
The state in EMA actually made the decision to, it's basically sand, some type of sand. I, I was going to have Willie sweep it.
It just came loose and it just lost it all the way down through campus.
Basically, the road was so slick that they, they cut the sand down to give the cars traction on the road. Some sort of vehicle had a.
Was anybody notified in city hall that we had a?
We didn't, I didn't know about it till I left this morning and I, I thought Willie had swept down through it. I said, what's he doing? Then it started getting thicker. No, he didn't do it. It wasn't us. It was a lot worse in the middle of the day. It was the state. Did y'all make a run on that? Yeah. It's, but state, turnover state in LA, I guess.
I've seen it today twice.
Eddie said he started out the canyon.
Just like to wish this council and you and Tracy and the rest of the group here a very, very Christmas. And I'm really going to enjoy next year. I think we, we've worked very good together and I'm very pleased with the way we want to be all.
Thank you, Steve.
We've all been good.
Who said that?
We've all been good.
Oh, yeah. Let me get my naughty list out here. But it, it's been a blessing. It really is.
I'll just ditto what he said.
Thank you.
Second that.
I enjoy working with all of you. I've learned a lot. Hope to learn a lot more. Thank you.
You know what I learned about? How far above you guys? This is all. You know what? My three colleagues on the other side have had holidays. Everybody here.
The city is a whole.
Good question.
Merry Christmas. Here's a big merry Christmas.
Mr. Roach?
Mr. Roach.
Mr. Roach.
Talk about dead trees. And I told him that I wasn't sure whether the dead trees were eligible or not. Does anybody look at that in the city?
Depends on where the trees go.
It's in the right way going from, up to the fence line from the road over it's a city.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really there with that road, but I mean, you, you generally look at ditch line to ditch line. Anything that's in that ditch would be us and anything outside that ditch. Kyle's probably going to tell me I feel wrong, but anything outside that ditch would not be our responsibility. Yeah?
We've cut a few out there over the years. I think we cut one back in early October. And I, I, Mr. Roach called me. I told him it was on our list. It's, you know, it's just a matter of getting to it. I know of one out there that really needs to come down, short order, but I don't think there's a lot.
Obviously, anything that, because it does create a safety hazard, right?
We'll take it down. I mean, we have taken down trees out there this year.
Well, at least it's on your radar.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's on your radar. We've cut, we've cut dead trees off, crumballs, some old ash that were leaning over in the, in neighborhood yards. So we kind of do that in conjunction when we get the help from the jail because it's a good job for them, weather permitting.
Do you want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas?
I'll ditto what everybody wants to say.
And, and Robert also has made arrangements in addition to checking if blacktop plants open tomorrow. We'll be, we've got an inmate crew. So we've got all the ingredients we think to make some progress on those problems.
You know what? Ditto and what everybody else says. I'm very grateful to be working with everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for a great job you've done bringing this information and communication. It's been really good. And thanks to the Georgetown Rapid for not writing anything bad.
Don't pressure Kelly. Don't pressure Kelly.
You are the Christmas elf.
Yes, yes, I am this year. But saying to everybody else Merry Christmas and it's been great to, to work with all of y'all the last two years. Mary, you've done a fabulous job and now we're just going to keep rolling for the future. We've got big things to do for the next two years.
Well, we, next year is going to be so cool. This state, this is going to be so good. If there's nothing else coming for the council, we stand to adjourn.
Eddie said it.
This year, curious.
Staying busy. I mean, nobody told me that. When I left, I was not too busy. I thought Willie was sweeping. I'll take care of getting on.
That's a big thing. Dave did that for us the most. I didn't want to do that, so.
Just kind of take care of the budget and all the ends and ends. Make sure we got cars. Take care of a few other blocks.
They appreciate it.
Yeah, me too. Well, Eddie said, Eddie said start taking. He said, mom should have always taken. He said, when he, when he cut the road here.
I'm impressed and more cars. The last year, he was locking in the two stores. Seven days. Oh, no, that's okay. Good job. And no, he followed me. When we're all there, you have to lock the doors.